Okay, this October 24th, 2018 meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board will come to order. Before we move with the agenda, Todd has a comment about Michelle McGinnis.
Yes, I just wanted to take a moment to mention Michelle McGinnis, a longtime teacher at Oyster River Middle School who retired three years ago, passed away over the weekend. Well, I just wanted to just say what an incredibly dedicated educator she was. I had the privilege of working with her for over 30 years. She was really Ms. Middle School. She was really big on, back in the 90s when our school district did a complete revisioning of the Oyster River Middle School, and we looked at all the different concepts that go into a middle school, and she was really a driving force behind that. I had the honor of working with her as a math teacher. She was a math teacher on my team for, I don't know, I've lost track of years, I think about 10 years, but she was a delightful person, and I just wanted to just take a moment to remember Michelle, and she was, like I said, a tremendously educated educator, like many of the other great educators we have in our district. So, her passing is noted. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Like a motion to approve the agenda, and as you will see, it's a little bit unusual in that we're having a presentation from Oyster River Middle School's 6th graders. This was a presentation that was made during the two-day meeting about the middle school, and we were also impressed by what these students did, and we've also said we'd like to hear from students more often than we do. So, we've invited them to present earlier, so that is a change in their normal schedule. So with that, with this little slightly modified schedule, could I have a motion to approve the agenda? Brian?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Moved by Brian, is there a second? Second by Al. Al in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor. Okay, if the 6th graders would like to come forward. Thank you for so much for coming. Thanks to your parents for being here. It's a real thrill for us to hear from students about the middle school. So, the floor is yours.
Thank you.
Maybe if you introduce yourselves first, and then we can start, okay?
You have to speak right in. My name is Claire, and I live in Durham.
My name's Amelia, and I live in Lee.
And my name's Caitlin, and I live in Durham, or Madbury.
That's right. And we're all 6th graders, and we are all members of the after-school STEC club.
So, we are here to propose some ideas for you guys to consider for the new school. We have put together a survey about making the new school sustainable, and we had all students take that survey. So, what is STEC anyways? STEC stands for Save the Earth Club. When students did a Trash on the Lawn project last year, they all had more great ideas. So Ms. O'Brien and Ms. Boone started STEC. STEC is a way for students to continue thinking about sustainability in the new school and as a community. It's open to all grades, and it is an after-school club on Mondays. We try to fix sustainability problems in school and around us. This school year, we are going to try to work on Trash-Free Tuesday in the school, Mark Recycling, Trash on the Lawn Day, Earth Week, and setting up a classroom compost system.
So, why did we create this survey? We wanted you to hear student input on current challenges they face and what they would like to see in the new school. The students had to rank their current challenges, outdoor additions and indoor additions, in order of importance to them. They also had the option to give us ideas that weren't mentioned in the ranking. We got 560 kid responses, and 390 typed in more. Some of the responses have to do with what we are showing, so we've put them directly into our presentations, so you can hear the ideas. They took this survey during advisory with their own laptop, which is why we have such a great response rate. They ranked current challenges, outdoor priorities, and indoor priorities for the new school. They also gave us open answers. So the way that the ranking works is you can kind of see an orange bar to a blue bar. The orange is how many people chose that option as their first choice, and then blue is their last choice. So what we did is we took the first and second, and we added them together to give the official number that you see later on the following slides.
In each category, we have, we put the top three survey results. We have later slides showing up for each of them. So, the current challenges for our current school are temperature, noise, and lockers. The indoor priorities for the new school are lockers, or bigger lockers, more teams for space, and an efficient cafe. The outdoor priorities for the new school are a bigger playground, an outdoor eating area, and a greenhouse. The next three slides will show the students what were most voted by the students. These are what students have suggested to be put into the new building. So, temperature was the number one voted current challenge by students at 79%. We think that this is a challenge because from our experiences, in May, June, and September, it tends to get very, very hot in the school. Some kids even bring in desk fans because they can't stand the heat. So we think that possibly putting in air conditioning would help out a lot in terms of heat. We also suggest geothermal and possibly solar panels, but that is your call.
The second most voted challenge in this school was noise, with 36%. We think this was voted because the new hand dryers are great, but the only problem is that they can be really loud and disrupt the classes. Also, the location of classrooms can have something to do with it, because if your classroom is near the band room, during class, you'll only hear the band playing. If you're by the gym, you'll hear whistling or instruments playing in the music room. What we are saying is that it can disrupt the classrooms, so the layout of the building and what we put in the building would be very important.
Lockers were the third most voted challenge at 31%, and we think this was voted by the students because in our experiences when going to or from class, we just have to stuff our things in our lockers, and sometimes we don't have enough space to do that, and we just have to shove them in and close them, and hoping that things don't fall out.
So, the next six slides will explain what students ranked as the top three indoor and outdoor priorities they would like to see in the new school. We put the top three ranked options for outdoor, and the top three were indoor, but they overall had six to choose from.
So, 60% of people voted playground as their first outdoor priority. They thought that having an energetic and athletic playground was the most important quality to have. The playground needs to be bigger and more interactive to students. Here are some of the responses kids gave us about having a better playground. "I love being outdoors, so being able to have multiple outdoor spaces would be amazing." "We should have an obstacle course, or skate park, or a pump track. That would make our school so much more athletic." By the way, a pump track is like a bike obstacle course. And we will also put in a few quotes later. 39% of students said an outdoor eating area was their first priority in the new school. "This would be a great place to eat because of the fall and spring weather. Being outside helps the students have creativity and sharper thinking. We also think it would be saving energy by turning off the lights and going outside."
Students ranked greenhouse as their third priority with 33%. "You would get fresh and year-round food. They can also use the space in winter for lunch or small groups. You can use the greenhouse in a curriculum too, teaching kids how to grow plants." And someone even told us in their open answer that maybe if we end up getting a bigger garden or a greenhouse, we could use the food that we grow in school lunches, and you could teach kids how to grow plants successfully. And the first indoor priority was bigger lockers. 50% of students said having bigger lockers was the best addition or priority for the new school. Their lockers are very cramped, and they need space for a lot of things. They think we need bigger and more efficient lockers. They need the space to put binders, books, projects, backpacks, lunches, computers, and a water bottle. Lots of students also have to put an instrument in their lockers, since there just isn't enough
The students ranked a whole team space as their second priority for indoor priorities. 37% of kids said that the, a whole team space, or this, said that a whole team space was important because there, because a whole team needs to bond, not just one class. There are also times where a whole team needs to do activities, presentations, or meetings together. So, an efficient inviting cafe was the third most priority for indoor, at 35%. "In the current cafeteria, there are long lines snaking into the hallway, so having more space and more efficient space would be great. Also, only having eight chairs at a table means that when students want to sit with eight of their friends, they have to pull up a chair and fit between two people, which wastes a few minutes of their lunchtime. So having longer tables would help out a lot. Also, to add on to that, the time to eat is a bit short. Like when you get inside from recess, depending if you buy a lunch or not, you get in line, and sometimes you may end up at the end of the line, which can take up to 15 minutes, which leaves you with only five minutes to eat."
So, here are a few of the details that they gave us in their long answers. "I believe that the whole building being accessible to individuals with disabilities is very important and should not be ignored." "Someone would like solar panels, a wind farm, and more efficient compost. Water fountains and sinks in every classroom would be great." That work. Bigger classrooms. I feel like they're pretty small. "I also think that we should get maps of the middle school on step-up days."
Also, 21% of the kids who gave us long answers said to add air conditioning. Okay, so these are a couple more of the longer answers. "I think that schools should have a compost system. It is a great way to help the earth along with making the garden more beautiful. Automatic lights is also a great way to conserve energy. We could also have collection bins for the garden. Finally, having solar panels is a great energy source."
So this was one of the answers that was more sustainable. "Last year, we at STACK raised money by making and selling seed balls and bean seeds. We raised the money to build a garden compost system for the students to use."
The second quote is, "I think that all of the students, specials including 21st Century Skills, STEM, health, and the others should all be close to one another, because I have to go from the end of music, which is at 10:20, and I have to be at the library for 21st Century Skills at 10:20. So I would like them to be closer together."
So, does anyone have any questions or comments?
Terrific job.
And we also wanted to let you know that, as we have said at our other presentation, that we are a resource, so if you ever feel you need more student input on events in the building of the new school, just contact us, and we can run those for you if you need more things later on.
Denise?
Thank you very much. It was a great presentation with some wonderful ideas. As far as the instruments, I'm wondering if perhaps having lockers in the music wing, specifically for instruments, if that might be a possibility, rather than, you know, building every locker large enough to have, you know, a large, a large instrument, so maybe...
Yeah, we actually already have some storage for instruments. There's violin and viola cases in the cafeteria, and then the cellos have, keep theirs in the locker rooms by the gym. All three of us are in orchestras, so as far as band goes, we don't know, but...
Other questions? I just want to say that we had this two-day workshop, and I think what you folks did in your presentation has crystallized some of the big ideas that came up again and again and again. So I think, I think for me, because I attend mostly, I think yours was the most succinct, focused presentation of the entire two days, and I want to just thank you for doing that, and thank you for coming before us today, so, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have public comments. Anybody like to speak? No one?
Dennis, did you, did you want to speak?
Well, nobody wants to. Just want to make sure I'm leaving anybody out. Okay?
Wait, I think, gentlemen, if you want to speak, just have the microphone.
I'm Mike Lambert, and I'm Henry Stevens' grandson, who was, I'm talking about the Oyster River, the land that was originally donated to build a school, but I guess that's been decided against, and then there's a debate now on what the future of it would be. I grew up there. It was my grandfather's land. I've crawled all over it on a tractor as a little boy, and I guess I'm just here tonight to say, share what I know his wishes and vision was. When he originally did that, developed that whole area, it was his hope that all along the Oyster River, there could be a right-of-way, that everyone could enjoy the river. And it's still on the maps today, but it really never came to be, because couldn't get the cooperation of every property owner along the way. Probably in hindsight, should have put it in the original deeds. And I didn't know this, but Dennis pointed out to me, then the deed that when he transferred the land to the school, there was a provision in there at one point where, should they not build a school there, some of the rights and so forth were to revert back, but apparently that was crossed out. But that's not the point. I guess I'm just letting you know, what his wishes would have been, and I'm sure still are, for that land, would be for the most amount of people to be able to share it and enjoy it. And he certainly would have been for the little footbridge and turning it back into a natural area that everyone could enjoy, as opposed to just turning it into a development. And I realize the school has some obligation to recoup costs and so forth, but in a perfect world, for me, it would just be turned over, I think, to the town, and turned into part of a nice park and connect to the UNH trails and all that, and barring that, as much as would be possible. And I guess that's all. He's buried up there. He loved the area, and he was very much of a naturalist, and hoped that, just the most amount of people would be able to see it, enjoy it, share it, and that's about it. Anyone has any questions about the history of it, but that's, I know that's what he would have wanted, and it's, I can speak for him, and I still live up there on Foss Farm Road, and my whole life, the property's been in the family, I think it's 100 years this year. And that's what I would like to see, so, that's it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other public comment? No? Okay, we have the approval of the minutes, the October 10th minutes. Could I have a motion to approve those? Denise?
Motion to approve the October 10th regular meeting minutes.
Is there a second? Second by Brian. Corrections?
I have one on page three, just the first full paragraph. It says, "Brian Sisneros asked if students are incorporated in the learning process." I think to be a little more on point, I believe it was, "Brian Sisneros asked if the building process is incorporated into the students' learning process." This kind of makes more sense.
The building process is incorporated into the students' learning process?
Yep.
Okay. That's my memory, what you said, yeah.
Yep. Just makes more sense.
So do you have that?
Thank you.
Okay. Other changes? Hearing none. With that, with that change, could we have a vote? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor, the minutes are approved. Announcements, commendations, and comments from the district?
Oh, from the district, I'm sorry.
Are there some? Carrie? Okay, before you get started, I don't think we ever officially congratulated you on the Blue Ribbon designation for your school, so I think a round of applause for Mastway.
Thank you. I was going to mention that. It was one of my bullets, for sure.
You can still mention it, okay?
What?
You can still mention it.
Yes, we're very pleased. And to just give you a little background behind that, the National Blue Ribbon Schools, there are 349 schools recognized in our nation, and this year, we were the only school recognized in the state of New Hampshire. So, we're quite proud of that. I'm very, very proud of all of our teachers, our students, our parents, and our community. It certainly takes a village, and I really appreciate everyone's dedication, and I do feel like sometimes it's hard to continue pushing on, and it pays off in the end. So I'm very excited. I am heading down to Washington DC the beginning of November, and we did, put some names in the hat of anybody that wanted to join. I was able to bring one person from the staff, and I'm pleased to say Susan Leifer will be joining us, a technology integration integrator. So she'll be joining me there, so we get to go down and have a lot of presentations and do some networking and that sort of thing. So we're really looking forward to that. So thank you very much. We are planning on doing a kind of merging now. We didn't expect so much excitement going on. Our building project is still underway. We are getting through it. It is on task. We had a building meeting, a construction meeting, excuse me, on Tuesday again. We meet every other week. We are, it is taking shape. It's looking great. Flooring is going down in the new classroom areas. I did sneak in the other day. I actually brought Pam Felber in to see her new place, and she got very excited. It's coming along beautifully. We hope, and it's on time, and we're hoping the beginning of November to also be in there. So, moving along, making progress. The crew has been fantastic, so I couldn't be happier with that. But we're looking at kind of having a ribbon-cutting ceremony tied together with Blue Ribbons, so we can all incorporate all that big celebration together, and have the, have the community come see what they've, they've built, so we're very excited. This week was a, today I should say, was a perfect example of what I love about Mastway School. We came together as an all-school celebration. We have our group of teachers that are working on what they're calling their Culture Club. Their theme is "We Are Many, We Are One," and throughout the year, we will be investigating and learning about different continents, different cultures around the world. We had a resurgence coming back with David McCormick as Map Man, and Judy George as Geography Girl, in their superhero costumes, which was great. I'll be sending out some photos from that, from our presentation today. The kids were enthralled, as always, and it was a really great learning to go on all grade levels. And then our PTO has their Halloween happenings coming on Friday, Friday night, 6 to 8 at school. We'll be covering the whole school. We always have our Haunted Courtyard. If you would like to come, I would like to note that we have a wonderful group of volunteers in our PTO, and we even have returning parents who still don't even have kids in our school anymore, coming back to help. Elle Ferris is one of our parents that comes back every year and helps us with the Haunted Courtyard, so I thank everyone for bringing together that community event. We're looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.
Good evening, everybody. Mohairamit has begun its year very well, I think, and we've started our Curriculum Enrichment theme for the year. This year, it's Year of the Farmer, and I'm here to talk to you about farms and pumpkins. We've been doing a lot of that this past fall, and really bringing a lot of different pieces of our Seacoast community together, which is really what I want to talk about. Our Year of the Farmer Curriculum Enrichment Program began with an all-school assembly with a number of local farms from the area, vegetable farms, animal farms. The UNH Organic Dairy Farm was there. We had elk farms, and people from all over showing the students what they grow, how they do it, how it impacts our land, and how they can get involved, which was a really great way to begin that. And of course, in the spring, our students plant pumpkin seeds in our pumpkin patch, which is very wonderfully allowed on Madbury property that we go and we use. And those pumpkins were tended by parents and volunteers throughout the summer, harvested by our students this fall for the first time. And then, for our second year in a row, we had an all-school pumpkin carving, so all the students carved their pumpkins together with over 30 volunteers from our families. And then we celebrated, of course, with the very traditional and wonderful pumpkin stroll at Mohairamit, which we had the other night. We had, again, incredible volunteers from UNH, from the scouts, from families. There were music storytellers, and all the pumpkins carved by the students, and they were giving their parents tours. It was just a great evening, and a nice way, again, for us to bring our community together and connect to our farming, and all the different enrichment activities that we're learning about at school. Thanks.
I got a heads up for you. So, the UNH has a winter market. It's sponsored by the UNH Slow Food Group. It's really cool. They went into like that, one of the open rooms in the mob, and they come in there, and a bunch of farmers come, and it's something to keep an eye on. Maybe you guys can link up with the Slow Food.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, that's a great idea.
Others from the district? No? Okay, from the board? Denise?
I'll just say that, to echo what David said about the pumpkin stroll, it was, you know, I went and for a little while, it was just wonderful, wonderful to see such a, you know, community come together, and yeah, it looked like everyone was having a wonderful time.
I'm volunteering at the Mastway Haunted Courtyard. I'm really excited.
I attended almost all of the two-day workshop on the middle school. It's really interesting, because the way it was run is, the head architect brought each constituent, each group, you know, the 6th graders, 7th graders, music teachers, guidance counselors, to talk and ask the same questions of each group, so there's this reiterative quality to it, that, that basically the same concerns bubbled up from each group. And so I think it'd be interesting to hear him when he presents his findings to us, but certain things just recurred and recurred and recurred, many of which I think those 6th graders captured. You know, variety of teaching spaces, certainly the heat, the, just the layout of the school. But it really felt like there's a consensus that was achieved by meeting with all of these groups, and I think that, you know, the head architect just did a wonderful job, and you know, really some cool stuff too, because like, you know, they talked about, wouldn't it be cool if we had a slide that went from one floor to the other? And it's interesting, this architect, he says, hmm, I hadn't thought of that, you know? I've been to museums that have had that, you know, I somehow doubt that's going to find its way to the final plan, but it was really cool to hear what they had to say. And this outdoor eating space, I don't think that was on everybody's agenda, but that, that came up, so it's very, very well done, and gave me really great confidence in this, this team, the way they can listen, because it's two days, and he was just, he was attentive to every group, even though the same things were coming back again and again and again. And Todd, you were, you had your start turn there, so sure, that was fun. See you.
Yeah, I, I was, I only made it for one group, but it was, he did a really good job, really taking everything that they said in, and not just that, but asking them further questions about how they could solve the problems that they brought up, which was really cool.
So I'd be curious, if you, if you had your top three, you know, I know it's been a while, but...
Yeah.
And you heard some of them.
Yeah, I've mentioned a couple of them a couple times. The playground, definitely. It's really dark in the middle school right now. I had a problem with that when I was there, and I didn't really think about it when I was in middle school. I found it interesting that they really do, but the sustainability of it is really important to me as well.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Thank you. Other comments from the board? Okay, district reports, assistant superintendent? No? Okay. Superintendent?
Thanks, Todd. So, every fall, Sue Caswell and I do this estimation, and really, it would be better called a guesstimation, and, you know, she puts a lot of work into it to try to calculate what she thinks the impact of the proposed budget will be. And so tonight, I'll share with you what the actuals were for, for the current budget year, the actual impact on the towns. So Durham, we projected it would be a 51, a 51 cent increase. It's going to be a $2.38 decrease. So, why? That seems like a pretty dramatic range, because Durham did a revaluation. And unlike most towns that grow 3, 3% would be a healthy growth rate. I've verified with Al and Kenny, it was around 16% for Durham, and so the value of the town went up, and it had a dramatic impact on what we thought would be the impact on taxes in Durham from the school side. The town of Lee, we estimated last fall, it would be 36 cents. It's actually going to be 4 cents. And the town of Durham, last fall, we estimated at $1.25, and it's actually going to be 77 cents.
For Madbury?
Excuse me, Madbury. And so, you know, it kind of speaks to the issue of when we do our workshops, and we're doing those guesstimates, you know, in print, and in Sue's presentation, and my presentation, we're so very cautious to say, these are estimates, they're, you know, the best we could do with the information we have, almost a year early. And, you know, there is a variability to it. When Madbury did their revale three years ago now, a very unusual thing happened. Not only did it not go up, the value of the town went down, and that had a dramatic impact on tax effort. So, when we're doing this work next month, Sue will do her usual magic with the numbers and come up with a best guess. and come up with a best guess. But 11 months later is when we actually know what the impact is. And so, I spent a little bit of time on this tonight, because we'll spend a lot of time on it in November. And, you know, when we do the presentation, we are very clear in writing and in our presentation that this is the best we think we can give you for right now. So, I was saying to Al earlier, the problem is when you get into these presentations and you say it's going to be, you know, a $1.25 increase in Madbury, you know, your gut does double takes. You really feel anxious when you say things like that. And 77 cents is still a lot, but it's not $1.25. And so, as we go through the budget process, I just kind of remind everybody that when we're doing it in November, we could be accurate or we could be way off, and we, there are variables that we don't control. So, the news is good tonight related to that. Other things I wanted to talk to you about, so I have met with the three mega-users of our buildings at this point, growing places, live and learn, and O R Y A. And they've all signed the new criteria for the use agreement. They were all wonderful to deal with. There was no animosity whatsoever. They totally understood that we were trying to protect the district's interest, and so that all went very well. You have a request from Andy that I support. And when we talked about the late start of the high school, there were two sports that really stood out as outside of our control, and that was swimming and ice hockey. And we rely on UNH for facilities. As it turns out, as the number of kids who want to participate in indoor track has increased, the availability of the track itself at UNH has decreased. And so, Andy came forward and asked if it would be okay for the indoor track team to participate in our gymnasium early on two days a week. And it felt to me very similar to the criteria of why we made the exceptions for swimming and ice hockey. We're at the mercy of another organization in terms of available space. So, I'm ready to support Andy's request to allow two days a week for the indoor track team to practice in our gym in order for them to stay competitive with other teams. And I didn't want to do that without letting the board know, because we are trying to protect that time spot, but otherwise, our indoor track team will be at a disadvantage. And I guess I'm putting it out there for any response or reaction, so I don't want anybody to get caught short.
That seems reasonable to me. Would that be the only team practicing on campus in the morning?
Yes.
Yeah. Just as a brainstorm, rather than putting that whole burden on the indoor track team, would it make sense to have the track in the morning one day a week and move basketball to the morning one day a week?
Andy, that would be a question in your bollie wick. You want to grab it?
I mean, yeah, that was something that we had discussed, but we, you know, at the end of the day, it was 84 kids that it'll affect with indoor track. We looked at it, you know, affecting 84 kids or affecting, I mean, 100 and something kids. So, we certainly are open to doing that, and I think it would, a lot would depend on some of our coaches' availability. We do have our boys' coach as an outside coach, works at another school, so I'm not sure if that would work for him or not, but certainly open to any, anything that will free up some space for the indoor track team to get some practice in.
Thank you. Thanks, Andy. Any other questions for Andy? Okay. Thank you, Andy. And then, the last thing that I wanted just to touch on, that Tom did a really good job on, and Patty did, and our students did, the visioning exercise was a real challenge the way that we set it up for the architect, because essentially, about every two hours, he had a new group in front of him, and he'd have to start from scratch. And as Tom alluded to, he'd ask the same questions, slightly modified for the group that he was addressing, you know, from music to these sixth graders to other groups of students who came in with their teacher, to various teacher groups, parents who were present, and elected officials who were present. And so, I tried to monitor the room for him and let him know who his principal audience was. I have to say that the guy stood on his feet for eight straight hours, never looked winded, really was engaged with the audience at every point. And, you know, some of the things that we talked about already, but a couple of things I just would add to the list, was using space in a way that it could be used in multiple settings. You know, it wasn't just the idea of having a big space and a small space, it was the idea of having a space that could be big or could be cut into smaller pieces. The idea of multiple uses of space was really intriguing. Obviously, the sustainability came up loud and clear. The outdoor space was a surprise, not so much the playground area, but the students were advocating for adventure components to the grounds. And outdoor eating space, which came up with the students earlier, which I thought was interesting. I didn't see that coming in terms of how the students were seeing the outside space. Patty's point on light came through many times. And the music presentation in relation to having a hall large enough to accommodate all the students and all the participants was really well done. The music teachers came in and had researched, you know, the way the space could work, not just for them, but potentially other disciplines. So, it really was a great two days. And Ron is, and now, the architect's now putting all that data together for a report to the board. I'll give you an unofficial assessment of the various dig spots on the current campus. Ron Lamar and Andre had staff present. The town actually cooperated, and the public works department in Durham showed up with a backhoe, and they did a number of test pits, if you will, around the property, not boring, this is like big chunks of the earth digging down to see how far they would have to go, to see if they would hit ledge and that kind of thing. So, that report will also be coming out officially, but unofficially talking to Andre, so this is unofficial, but based on his experience, he felt the site looked like a good site for a new school. But we'll have that report in the next couple of weeks, I hope. They did hit ledge, but it was well below where you'd put your footings, so the ledge doesn't look like it's going to be an issue for us. So, we'll wait for that report, and I'll share that with you when it comes in.
Was that at the Orchard Drive property?
Oh, no, this is at the current middle school site, Patty, sorry. Yeah, a question, Michael?
Going back to the visioning exercise, so we had the kind of the standing committee there, as well as other folks that were invited to participate in terms of listening to the different groups that came through to share their ideas. What, did we then seek the input or feedback from those other folks that were brought in to listen to, the students and staff and others that presented?
Yeah, they actually had special, like elected officials and parents and community members in between our own staff and students had dedicated time to talk to the architect as well. Is that what you're asking, Michael?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they did.
Okay.
Yeah, and the, so there was an elected official from Lee, Madbury, and Durham. I take that back. Jay's no longer an elected official, but he's representing the select board. And so, they were all represented and spoke very eloquently about the advocacy for the project and asked very clear questions and offered their ideas. And the parents that were present did a great job as well. When we were talking about sustainability, one parent said, well, I don't want to burst anybody's bubble, but, you know, I can be supportive of sustainability, but we have to do our homework. We can't just assume people are going to support this just because it's sustainable. We have to show them how, you know, what the cost-benefit analysis of it is and how we come out ahead in the long run and so forth. And so, it wasn't all group hugs and stuff. People were making good challenges and asking good questions, and there was a lot of great interaction between people in the audience. So, it was, he was very much in the sponge mode. He was just absorbing things, and people had lots of opportunity to participate.
Do you know when the survey was conducted at the middle school?
The kids?
Yeah.
The week before the architect showed up.
And one thing you always have to be careful of is how questions and surveys affect your feeling about the topic afterwards.
Right.
If I go around and survey the public and say, is Jim's best quality his good looks or his nice car?
Surely, it would be the good looks.
But that then, you know, has an effect of biasing the...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the kids did it before the exercise.
Right. So, guys, I'm kind of curious if there were other things that might have come out if they hadn't done that, or if it was more free-form.
Well, the, you know, the, so that was an exercise for the stat club, but the young lady who spoke said the same thing to us when we were in the workshop. She said, now, if there's specific issues that you would like student input on, let us know, and, you know, we'll reach out. So, they're willing to work this more than once, I guess is what I'm saying. They're very open to being, you know, truly participants. Ron Lamar, who's the architect, absolutely said it was, you know, he's done this for a couple decades now, and he said it was the best student presentation he'd ever seen bar none, because, I mean, these kids really put a lot of work and effort into it. And he asked them if they would be available to pursue student opinion on other issues as we go through the process, and they said absolutely. So, I think it's, you know, it's a pretty impressive first start, and they're willing to be players all the way through, and that's exactly what we want.
And Jay said the one-to-one makes it really easy to do that, because they all have the computer.
Yeah, yeah. That was a real indicator of, like, one of the first obvious benefits of having one-to-one, is they did the survey in their advisor time. And so, you know, that's why the response was so high. You would never get 86% on a survey if you paid people a million bucks, but because they were sitting right there and they're asked the question, you know, they can went right to town, so.
I think like the highest percentage for voter turnout for the presidential election ever has been 63%, and they got 86%.
Yeah. What, which president? Which president was it, Patty?
Oh, I don't know.
Put you right on the spot.
Yeah.
Another question, Michael?
When do we, when are we going to have a summary from Ron?
That I don't have a specific date on, but it'll be coming soon. He's working on it.
I mentioned this to Dr. Morris, but I just, in terms of sort of selling it when we get to that point, I think one of the things that would be helpful is to get costs from other similar projects, like other middle school projects, perhaps in the area, you know, recent projects, just to be able to say, well, that's a lot of money. Well, compared to what, you know? So, I think, I think that could be something that would be helpful to us, so that people would know, you know, it's just like we have our comparison schools, similar to that, sort of have comparison schools when it comes to building a new school.
And I think one of the issues that, in terms of comparing, the plan, just the expectation now, is that we would go with pretty much state-of-the-art, energy-neutral school, which puts, there's an upfront cost for that, so it's your apples and oranges a little bit if you're comparing it to a school that's unconventional fuel. But that's, again, that's something that'll require education, you know, is it worth, are people willing to pay that money to have an energy-neutral school that, you know, is pretty much off the grid for carbon fuel?
Right, right.
Questions? What's that? Sue?
Good evening. I'm here to present you with the new rate for Barrington tuition for next year. I do want to caution you, I believe in the packet that you have online, it's not the correct rate, so I put a new memo in your packets with the new rate. So, we use the data from this year, the MS-22 figures, and the increase is 1.81%, so Barrington's tuition for next year is $16,792. So, I need...
Do you need a motion to...
I do, I do, because we will notify Barrington officially to approve that rate.
Do we have a motion to approve the new rate? Denise?
I'll motion to approve the Barrington tuition rate for the 2019-20 school year at $16,792.
Moved by Denise, is there a second? Second by Michael? Okay.
I took a look at the agreement, and I think this is, this is great. We, according to the agreement, we are supposed to meet with the Barrington School Board twice a year.
And that has not been what we've been doing. We've been meeting at the request of the Barrington Board, so they've come once before, and they, Sue and I met with them today, and they're looking to come again this year. And today, they were sitting with Sue and I and trying to get a handle on how the tuition rate is calculated, and so we're in the process of giving them some additional information related to this tuition rate, but they have asked for a meeting this year.
So, I think December 12th is one possibility we're looking at, isn't it? I think. What was the reason it was so much, the increase was so much lower than previous years?
I believe when we talked about it, the prior year, we added a number of positions to the high school because of the enrollment increase, but...
But we didn't add a lot?
No, the budget for the high school, you can see it right there, didn't increase as much as it has in the past.
Okay. Okay, so you have a motion and a second. Are there further questions? Hearing that all in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor, so the tuition's approved.
Thanks.
Student Center report?
All right, I've got a lot. So, next week on the second, the quarter ends, which means teachers have to get all their finalized grades for the quarter in soon after that. At the end of the quarter, there's always sort of a flurry of activity as kids try to boost their grades right at the last minute. And it's, can be difficult for teachers, because they have to do a lot of grading and they have to meet the deadline. So, yeah, that's a big, sort of, it takes up a lot of energy of the school. Mrs. Renner's son, she's a teacher at the middle, she was a teacher at the middle school, came and visited the high school, and he's a filmmaker, so he talked about sort of what he does, how he got into it, and had a free screening of his film, just to sort of show the students that it was an option, and tell them about how his career has sort of formed and that everyone has a different path. I didn't get to go myself, but a lot of people really, really enjoyed it and found it valuable. Certainly, more present in the senior class right now is college applications. The November 1 is the deadline for a lot of early action deadlines, so there's been a lot of stress in the senior class about that. The deadlines are usually November 1, November 15, sometimes there's some in December, and then January 1. So, that's a lot. Also takes up a lot of energy of the senior class and makes things more stressful. Something that I have a lot of news on is fall sports. They're coming to a close, which means playoff season. The girls varsity soccer team has a preliminary game tomorrow at 3:30, so we don't know whether they'll continue on into playoffs until after we know the turnout of that game. The boys varsity soccer team has their quarterfinal game on Saturday at 2 o'clock, and they've been doing pretty well this year, so it's a really exciting, should be an exciting playoff year for them.
Do you know where these games are?
They're all at this high school, actually.
Okay, okay.
The girls volleyball team has their quarterfinal game here on Saturday at 6:00. And the unified soccer team has their quarterfinal game here on Tuesday at 3:30. So, it's a lot, but I'm sure everyone is very, very excited about that. Tomorrow night is the Barrington Information Night. On October 31, Friends Forever is visiting the school, so that's sort of something that our school has been looking into. They visit every year, but they have a more in-depth program, which Spalding participates in. And so, they want to, it's this program where students from Ireland can come here and students from here can go to Ireland, sort of on a transfer basis, but focusing on really learning in-depth about other people's culture and... learning in-depth about other people's culture and doing community service while you're in the opposite place. And so the students from Ireland are coming to our school on the thirty-first. They're just gonna sort of shadow some NHS students and then go to the Advanced World Cultures Class, which I'm in, and we're just gonna sort of talk about what life is like in different countries, which will be really interesting. November seventh, the date of our next meeting, I think, is the World Language Festival, where levels three and up perform, put on and perform plays in, in that language. I'm in French five, so we're doing The Little Prince. I'm really excited. Um, so that's, yeah, that's exciting. The day after that, the Thursday, the eighth, is the Quarterly Coffee House, which everyone really enjoys all the, every, every year. And then the weekend before Thanksgiving, the fifteenth to the eighteenth, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, is the Fall Play, which I'm in, really excited. We've been having rehearsals every day for that, so, yeah, it should be really good. It's a streetcar named Desire, so really heavy stuff, but it should be really, really good. And the Students, Student Senate is exploring ways to help new students integrate into the high school. I wasn't at that meeting, so I can't really tell you all that much about it, but it sounds like they really wanna include everyone and make sure that everyone has a good experience in high school.
Great, thank you. Questions? Good report, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we have the SHAPE results, Heather and Ryan.
Um, I'm just here to briefly go over the assessment results that we did from the K-12 MTSS programming that we presented on last year. Um, on this slide, if you, on the right side of the slide are just some of the more common mental health issues that we'll see among teenagers and adolescents, but when we talk about this, I just wanna give like a sort of brief cultural context for this mental health change. And I think nationally and locally, we're seeing changes. We're seeing more awareness, I think, than on the national level, the, you know, trad, mass tragedies that are happening are bringing a lot of awareness. And you're seeing increased problem solving and research happening. Bills are being, um, there's a bill right now on the, the House floor, I believe, called the Mental Health in Schools Act. So there are, that would provide funding for schools and things like that. So I just think there's a huge awareness culturally, and you kind of hear mental health and trauma everywhere you turn if you're related to the school. Locally, of course, we have our own experiences with tragedy, and I think that that's brought awareness among our community. Um, you know, I've been here for two and a half years, and I've gotta say that I'm pretty proud of, to be in this district. I think that the school board support, the superintendent, certainly the teachers and how compassionate they are and how passionate they are, the administrators, but also the community at large, and I think our students. I think they're really inspiring, and I'll talk a little bit about that. But just to, also to shed some information on the context, we talk about one in five, thirteen to eighteen-year-olds meeting criteria for a mental health condition. If you broke that down, you might see eleven percent having a mood disorder, or ten percent having a behavioral disorder, eight percent having potentially anxiety. But only thirty-five percent, or less than half, or thirteen, eighteen-year-olds are actually getting diagnosed or treated. We know that, oh, sorry, we know that mental health symptoms emerge during adolescence. When we look at adults with mental health issues, we see that if you go back, fifty percent of them would have had an expression of that before age fourteen, and if you go up to age twenty-four, it's seventy-five percent, seventy-four percent. So we can see that these issues start in, in the years that we are working with these students, and there's some evidence of those. So I just wanted to paint the cultural context, and maybe you're already aware of that, and I'm sorry if you are, but I, I think that it's a change that I've seen, and I've only been in education for, for eleven years. But one of the things that I did wanna highlight is that, the inspiring thing about the students, last year we talked about some students who came forward and really wanted to know what we're doing about mental health in the school, and they, they sort of in, um, passioned Dr. Morris to, to work with us at the high school to start the Student Mental Health Wellness Committee. And, and then the great news was that this year, when a group of students individually didn't know about the committee, came and wanted to start the Peace of Mind Committee, it was like the same thing, but a different group of students. So it just kind of echoes and illustrates that the student awareness of mental health, they're asking for help, but things are changing, and they're, they're wanna be proactive, and they wanna be active, and they wanna be involved. So just to go briefly, you know, the self-assessment that we did is through the office, New Hampshire Office of Student Wellness, there's different domains that we looked at. So teaming is about, imagine a group of individuals who meet weekly and talk about students, or look for data that indicate risk of, of mental health issues, or school failure, or anything that would be related to that. We call these like MTSS teams, or it might have been called the Child Study Team, depending on the schools, when we did the evaluation, we had different names, but most schools had this. But changing these teams was something that we did, and there should be comprised of multidisciplinary teams, so it should be potentially a speech pathologist, and a school psychologist, and a teacher, and a administrator, and so on. We also evaluated ourselves on the data that we're using. Are we using that to make the decisions? We collect a lot of data, attendance, grades, things like that, but are we using it in a proactive way to preventatively identify students potentially at risk? We looked at evidence-based supports, we looked at evidence-based implementation. Is what we're doing evidence-based? Is it reaching every student? Is it only reaching the freshmen? Is it reaching seniors? And so on. And this is K-12, I, I'm working in the high school, so I guess that's in my mind. But then, the needs assessment and the resource mapping. The only other thing that I would say is that this SHAPE system allows us to look at actual number of students that have been screened for mental health in the school, K-12, and also number of students who have received mental health services. So those were things that we tried to evaluate ourselves on. So when we got our reports back, essentially, we realized that we have a lot going on, that, and, and using this multi-tiered system of student support as a framework, as a way to align what we have going on and to really see, we can tell that that's going to be the, one of the biggest improvements of doing the self-assessment. We didn't have a lot of the data, because it's the first time we're doing the self-assessment. We're going to be doing this every year, so we expect that to improve. But when we looked at where we were progressing, emerging, or we'd already had mastery at each school, and then at the district level, what we realized is that there were some common threads, because then we also, we looked at where we were emerging and progressing and really in need, and then we also looked at, as teams, we met last June and decided, you know, this is a, an easier goal, this one's harder, we think we can get more yardage if we focus on these. So we narrowed it down to three for each school, and there was a trend. At the elementary schools, it was teaming, improving that process, looking at who's on those teams, database decision-making, what kind of data they're collecting, and what we do with that data, and then evidence-based implementation. At the middle and high school, it was the same, database decision-making and teaming were there, but we had evidence-based supports and services rather than the implementation piece, where the priorities that were identified. So what do the SHAPEs, SHAPE results do for us? It, it directly informed our strategic planning. We worked over the summer on that, but it affected our goals, the five-year goal for K-12 MTSS system in five years. So each school is gonna have different elements or different quality domains that they're gonna be working on each year, but at the end, we should all be in the same place. And also, one of the goals that came from that was to have a sort of bird's-eye view, a district-level team that would be multidisciplinary, that looked at dat, aggregated data, to look at different schools and see where resources maybe need to be directed. And so what are we doing right now, based on this data? For teaming, because that was a priority for every school, we're making adjustments to each team. We've got a mental health provider on two teams that, that were more focused on academics previous to this. The data analysis procedures are changing, we're looking at using data preventatively. An example of that would be if we took a handful of students who are really struggling in their late year, you know, senior year, and we do an analysis of the different variables that we look at for data, like attendance, or grades, or if they passed English, ninth grade English, or, and we do an analysis and see if there's any common data points that predict difficulty later in the year, so that we can focus our efforts on ninth and tenth graders who show those signs before it's too late. Not too late, but before it's harder. And, you know, these teams are gonna establish cut points for risk, and how we're gonna progress monitor, and all that kind of stuff. And also procedures for including parents in that process, and how do we inform parents that we are, you know, we're, we're at a pre-referral and problem-solving phase for your child is struggling a little bit, we'd like to include you and see how we can all help. Excuse me, I have a little cold. So one of the other, the database decision-making priorities was the DESA, that's DEVERO Student Assessment, Strengths Assessment, and that's an assessment that they're gonna be rolling out at both elementary schools, and they're going through training on that right now. We also have licenses for the middle school to pilot it, so a few, a handful of licenses to see what that's gonna be like at the middle school, and there's a, a high school version we're gonna be piloting at the high school, we have those licenses as well. But we're also looking at that existing data analysis that I explained a minute ago. And then we're looking at our Tier One stuff. The elementary schools are doing Open Circle, where they're investigating and piloting that. They're look, the middle school's looking at some different SEL programs as well, and the high school is looking at our advisory and, and the other things that we're doing, like sexual dating violence prevention and suicide prevention. We wanna involve the community a little bit more, too, and offer some gatekeeper trainings for the community. So that's something that we plan to do this year as well. And then at the Tier Three level, we're looking at small groups. So we sent a handful of counselors to get trained and to do professional development with cognitive behavior therapy and brief solution-focused therapy. So we're looking at improving the evidence-based practices that we currently have. Open Circle is an evidence-based intervention that also has small group instruction, so if students, there's targeted groups, we can use the evidence-based programs to improve their data. And the high school, in the middle school, we both have these great schedules that allow flexibility for things like stress management, yoga, psychoeducation on mental illness, and things like that. So that would be small group-based interventions. And then at our Tier Three level, that's individual, so we, we have community partners that's gonna be coming into all four schools, that's a change. They're the local mental health center. We have a licensed drug and alcohol counselor at the high school, and we're looking at capacity. I think that that's gonna be the question that I have anyway. We have, you know, if we're gonna be screening, and these numbers are data that we talked about with thirty-five percent of students receiving the treatment out of, you know, the one in five that potentially needs it, and we start doing mental health screening school-wide, what happens from that? What, what comes forward? You know, we're operating, as a school psychologist, I don't have a lot of time in my day just sitting around going like, who else can I help today? You know, it's a pretty busy job for everybody, and I love that. I mean, it's a great job. But, you know, I, that's just something that's on my mind. So we're gonna do an analysis of what counselors are doing right now, and, you know, we have a really competitive academic school system, so we have a lot of students who are going to college. If it's eighty percent going to four-year college, and another thirteen going on to two-year, and maybe the rest going into the workforce, that's a lot of applications, and a lot of parent phone calls, and a lot of things like that. So we're just looking at capacity. If, if we're gonna be anticipating a need, then I think that it's something we need to look at with data. And then moving forward, I think one of the most exciting things about this process was really digging into the SHAPE process and getting alignment with all of the other mental health people and allies in our district, and everybody's sort of on the same page. And at this point, I think our self-assessment next year is gonna be really telling, and I'm hoping that we'll have even better data and more accurate results to really highlight what's going on and where the baselines are for different topics, so. I don't know if there's any questions, that was kind of it, I went fast, yeah.
So you've kind of touched on, I mean, when you talked about capacity, and particularly when you did one in five, it's not just the capacity that worries me, it's the continuity of care. So once you've identified them, say, you get an eighth grader, you've identified that potentially has a problem, A, you need, you potentially may have them for five years where you work with them. Additionally, you may have the complexity of handing off from middle school to the high school. So how do you ensure continuity? I mean, it's great that they've been identified and you start with it, but the follow-up is gonna be a significant amount of work, particularly with the growth of numbers.
Yeah.
So I can speak to that. So the counselors at the middle school and the counselors at the high school, but, well, at the elementary level and the middle school to high school transition, spend time at the end of each year talking about specific students to ensure continuity of care. So whether it's academic concerns or mental health concerns, when students come in from the middle school or, or the elementary through middle school with significant needs, we, we know about that, so we're able to kind of continue that. It might look a little bit different at the different levels, the different buildings, but the services, the care is there, if that makes sense.
Kenny?
I have a, a few questions, a few comments, and greatly appreciate all the work that you're putting forward. So I get, you know, last year you did the SHAPE, you're planning to redo it. You talk about putting together a strategic plan, which is great. So just listening to you and starting to react, so for years, we did the youth at risk. We collected all that data, and really, what did we do with that data? I don't know. But we certainly saw we had population at risk. You talk about capacity and, and mental health, and, and I don't know the answer, and I, and for sure, I've talked about the mental health of our students for a long time, I worry about the mental health of our society, and trying to figure out what the role of the school is in that. And the approach I see you guys looking at is assessment to identify problems, and then working with certain kids. And I look at it, if we identify a kid as diabetes, the kid with diabetes isn't gonna be your team, the kid with diabetes is gonna be with a, a professional who deals with diabetes. Is it the role of the school to be the counselor for kids, or should our role be more? So I, I'm trying to think of how to explain it, and I'm not being critical, but should our school be more, rather than being reactionary, which is, we're seeing kids have mental health issues, and we're trying to help them with their mental health issues, should we be, should that be the role for the professional, who that's, you know, the person, you know, your career, their counselors, and that's all they do is counseling, and they're not dealing with academics and college placement and testing? Should we instead be looking at what is systemic going on, and how do we look at our system, whether it's what parents are putting on their kids, whether, you know, it's part of when we talked about late start, and we talked about homework, the driver really was, how are we gonna help our kids from a mental health standpoint? How are we looking at what technology is doing to kids? You know, what are, what are we looking at? The impact that, you know, we took away the phones from the kids in the middle school, but it's not like then they don't go home and they're on phones, and certainly, kids in high school are on phones all the time, our society is on phones all the time. You can't drive down the road without that, so. And I'm not at all being critical, but I'm, I'm trying to, I, I just feel if we keep throwing things after what we're getting from SHAPE, we're never gonna get on top of it. And the only way for me to get on top of it, and it's where I think our school district could be important, is to start really working with community and students from a mental health of our community. And that means, what, what are we doing with, to our kids? Why are kids feeling this way? Why are adults feeling this way? But I'm, I'm ranting, and I'm sorry, but I just, I don't know the answer.
Ken, can I take a shot? I don't know the answer either, so, you know, the, the issue is, you know, the school owns a small piece of that, and the greater society owns a larger piece. The problem is that the greater society isn't owning their piece, and so, you know, what we contribute to the kids' stress in terms of homework and, you know, high expectations is a small piece of the pressure children are under. is a small piece of the pressure children are under. So, you know, every day Heather and Ryan have a child in crisis in their space, and they look for, they look to see what they can handle effectively. They also recognize that there are certain things they can't handle effectively, and so they make referrals. The problem with our state and our country is, there's no place for those referrals. The number of places for 20% of our kids who are struggling is miniscule to the problem. And so, as often happens in our society, the schools take a bigger and bigger bite of the responsibility. And so, that is the struggle. The struggle is, what do we own, what does a community own? And when we say "community," you have to think state, country, not Durham, not Lee, not Madbury, because it's a state issue, and, you know, we continuously articulate to the legislature the need for more access to mental health resources for adolescents. But we also know there aren't enough resources for grown-ups. And so, you know, your questions are really profound, and they go way beyond, they reach beyond the issue that we're struggling with. So, as we've been working through the mental health issue, we certainly have reached out to providers, but they're stretched very, very thin as well. And so, what we're trying to do is own what's appropriate for us to own, but if we have a child in crisis, whether there's a resource beyond us or not, we have people who are working with those children here, as best we can. And, so, whatever response we put forward as a school system is going to be inadequate to the task, because society in general is not there with us yet. People will, politicians will mouth support and express concern, but continue not to fund the resources to support, you know, children and adults in stress. And so, it is a big question you're asking, and unfortunately, as Heather and Ryan and the counseling staff, and our special needs teachers, and our regular teachers all express concern for a child, it may be that the best, the most effective resource available is us.
And I agree completely with everything you said, and support every direction that the two of you are going, it's a tremendous endeavor, and I think you've done wonderfully with it. And I think maybe the, maybe what I was trying to say is, when we had the crisis with the racial episode in our school district last year, we dealt with that as a community. It wasn't just a workshop in a class, it wasn't a one-off, it was a prolonged effort that really got the community involved. And, in a way, to, and I think we have a very, we're so fortunate, we have a receptive community, and to talk to the parents in our community that we have a mental health crisis. And certainly, you know, as a physician, I can't get people into counseling, and I do so much more counseling than I'm capable of or trained of doing, I shouldn't be doing it. But, I think if we, somehow, I think good could come out of, and the programs you've put together, when you've brought in a speaker, have been so well-received, and I think so informative for parents. And I know you can't split too soon, but maybe to consider some more weight to the systemic issue, and how do we prevent a kid getting from that crisis, rather than putting the fire out, trying to put the fire out?
I just wanted to speak to your point, a couple of things, because I agree that it's really a larger question about community, and I think one example of a program that we brought in that may answer some of that for you is, any Tier One, when we say the word "Tier One," we're really talking preventative, so it should be reaching as many students as possible, and it should be preventing more serious conditions or development of mental health symptoms. So, one thing that we did with the YRBS data is that we noticed a spike in relationship violence. So, we brought in an evidence-based program called Bringing in the Bystander, and we did it with all of our sophomores, and it's eight weeks, and it teaches them about consent, and it teaches them about respect, and it teaches them about, it's a really, really good program, and it teaches them to look out for each other. So, it's preventative in terms of date rape, or, you know, things that are, that potentially could happen in relationships, and how to see the warning signs, and how to help friends that appear to be struggling. So, we know that sexual assault predicts suicides, and it predicts mental health issues. So, using YRBS data, we have an eight-week program that is training kids on what to look for, you know, what not to do, and how to help each other. And it's much more, and I'm not being very eloquent about the content of it right now...
No, you are.
But, it's how we use that data, and it is preventative. And is it every single mental health condition that we put up on that board? Not yet, but I think that's the goal, is that we're looking at all of that.
And I would say, in terms of the community, this is a great time to advertise the Mental Health Forum that we're having. We just, I would say, tomorrow is our next meeting of our student group, so hopefully after that, our flyer will be set, and we can start advertising, that's going to be on November 29th. And it is designed similar to the Diversity Forum, we have a number of presenters, there's going to be discussion elements to it, so I think certainly that is where we're trying to engage with the community, because it is a much larger problem than the school or any one piece. So definitely, I would encourage you or anybody you're talking to to please attend that, because I think it's, you know, as a school, we take what we get here, you know, certainly we know that there are students who need help this well beyond us, and if we can get them access to it, we'll do it. But, in the end, they're here eight hours a day, and we have to get them through a school day, so we're going to do that, while trying to fix the other pieces, which, you know, may or may not be fixed. I think the other piece is, New Hampshire is rewriting their 10-year mental health plan, so that's happening right now, they've had forums around the state. Some people from Oyster River attended one in Portsmouth recently, so, you know, they're working on that piece, which is hopefully going to help with mental health in the state. So, we'll see what comes up with that.
Great. And I just really want to make sure, I'm not, I'm so impressed with what you're doing, and so appreciative of what you're doing, the struggle is great, and I think you're doing a great job, and I think we're all hemmed in with this, and we're all very worried about it, and I thank you for all that you're doing.
Thanks for the support.
Denise?
And just to kind of add, I think the other issue is not only are resources limited in our state, but they're also fragmented in a lot of cases, and sometimes it's hard to know. Like, there's, I just found out about adolescent group that meets down in Seabrook for co-occurring disorders, and I was like, "Oh, I didn't know about that," you know? And, so that's the other challenge, I think, sometimes, is just trying to find, you know, there are some resources, but sometimes it's just, you know, they're new, they just, or, you know, a lot of them are grant-funded, so they weren't here last year, they're here this year, that type of thing. The other thing that I had just learned, I went to a conference on Friday, and there's a curriculum called Choose Love, and I don't know if that's one of them that you're looking at at all, but...
The middle school is looking at that.
They are looking at that as well, and again, I had just learned about that particular one, it's free, and I don't know research-based or not, but again, it's, I think it is a big challenge to just try and say, "Okay, you know, what is available, and how can we sort of put this kind of..." It's patchwork, unfortunately, in too many cases.
I just wanted to make sort of a quick unrelated plug about something that I've noticed specifically this week. I've noticed that, as I've gone through high school, there are teachers that I get to know better and better, and I feel more comfortable going to them when I'm really stressed, or like I have a lot of work. And it's, clearly, it's because I've gotten to know them over the years, and I've had, I've known them for a long time. I think it would be really helpful if high schoolers had someone that they met in middle school, or even earlier, that they knew throughout their school career, and that they knew they could go to, but it's someone that's in the high school building, that they already know going in. And, I think freshmen have a lot of stress, I think it's like freshman and senior, freshman and juniors maybe have the most stress, and this freshman don't know anyone there, and it might be really helpful if they had a teacher, a guidance counselor, that they already had a connection with. So, unrelated, but...
It's actually related.
Yeah.
Some kind of looping or something.
Other questions?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Safety audit, David?
I'm here to talk about the school safety audit that we had at MoHerramitt in the summertime. You should have a summary for me in your backup. The State of New Hampshire Department of Safety's Homeland Security and Emergency Management Department, long name for a very important group, conducted an assessment with us, representative from Homeland Security met with me, Ms. Caswell, members of Facilities and Madbury Police and Fire. We toured the school, we talked about the practices that we have in place, we went through a self-assessment that I had completed prior to the audit, and then we talked about three major areas: surveillance, how we look at what's going on in the school, access control, how we control access to the building from the public, and then emergency alerting, how we communicate during emergencies, and how we communicate with the community during an emergency. They then sent a report with photographs and information and resources, hitting all those points. The two, my two main takeaways from the process was that we have some little things that we can do here and there in all three categories, and then we have a really big one that we should be doing. And all the little ones in surveillance, the recommendations were to, you know, conduct an audit of where our cameras are, and are they in the right places? That's something that we should be doing all the time, I regularly talk to Facilities about that. For example, when we removed the modulators in February, we had a camera there, we don't need that camera in that space anymore, so we get to put that someplace else, and make sure that we, in the office, can see those cameras and have access to them on our iPads and things like that. And then there were some smaller recommendations about hinged locations and things that Facilities can work on, and some that I've already collaborated with the Chief of Madbury Police on, to make some changes to how we communicate during an emergency system from our office to the department as well. The really big one was access control, and how we control access to our building. The entrance to MoHerramitt does not give us control of access in a way that in 2018 is considered to be safe. We have doors locked, we have a buzzer, once that person enters our building, we cannot stop them from accessing the school, they have to cross the main hallway of our school to get into the office. We are very proactive about that, we make sure that everybody signs in, wears a badge, we've taught, and people knew this before I got here, that if there was an adult in the building without a name tag, we're all supposed to very politely ask them why they're here, and make sure they go back to the office. But in 2018, a safe entrance means that you have double doors, two sets that are locked, you have access to the office through a secure window, the office can decide whether or not you need access to the school or not, and then give you that access. I've had experiences in all districts that I've worked in where we've had to deny access to people, and when you do that in an unsafe environment, it can really impact your school. If you can do that between two locked doors with access to the office only, you can do that in a much safer environment. So, that was the main thrust of their work, and their recommendations for us, and that's something that we've, of course, been talking about, as you know, with plans for a possible building of an entrance to, a new entrance to MoHerramitt, and how that would impact the office and the safety of our school.
Is that...
Any questions for me?
In terms of the next step for, in the budget?
It is in the draft budget, as I speak right now, and hopefully it'll be there when we get to the workshop with you guys.
I mean, you know, another part of that would be the fact that if I'm in my office, I don't see the entrance to our school. And I have one door that is behind the office in order for me to get out and interact with people, and then when I've had to have private meetings with people who I have to deny access to the building, I'm doing that in a small office, they're already in the building. So, all of those things become really problematic.
Your office is weirdly placed in that school, isn't it?
I think so.
I mean, it's like, some little den in the middle of the, you know, building.
Yes, yeah, and it's half the size than it was originally, and that was to create space for student need. That was done before I got here, I think it was a very wise move that Dennis did, to create more space for our students, but it's even smaller than it should have been, it would have been weird anyway, but it's just a smaller...
A little weirder, yeah.
I mean, the bigger issue, I mean, I've been around MoHerramitt a long time with kids, with my kids going through there, and I mean, it used to be you just walked into MoHerramitt, and then we went to where you, I mean, and literally you could walk in and take your kid out without really anyone knowing, and then we started with like that little line, you know, like a, you know, coats things up with a rope, and, but the bigger, I mean, the most significant issue, I mean, you addressed, is that, once you buzz the door, you have access to the entire building, and that is clearly the most important one to start with.
Yes, I mean, the women in our office are incredibly proactive about making sure that not only are they welcoming and polite and helpful, but that they are also serious about people needing to come into the office and check in and sign in and get a badge, and routinely, we buzz someone in, and then somebody scurries out of the office to go find that person down the hallway and say, "Please come back to the office." And it's just that simple. And as they're crossing the hallway, there are students walking to and from the gym and the cafeteria. And, you know, we're very thankful for a wonderful community, and the majority of everyone who comes into our building has been doing so for a very long time, and we're always incredibly welcoming and happy to see them, and we want people to volunteer, but we do know that we have other issues that we need to be really thoughtful about and proactive about keeping our school safe. Dan?
I noticed in the report, and as far as I know, this is not something that our district has a lot of influence over, but it's a conversation we've had over the past few years, collaborative relationship between the school system and public safety departments. Madbury has a part-time police force, very small, often out of town for, you know, court dates, that sort of thing, and the police chief has spoken about that to us directly. Where do we stand on the current situation with coverage, and specifically with the recommendation, it seems, that the police departments of Lee, Durham, and even UNH be incorporated?
So, I can speak a little bit to that, and I'm sure Dr. Morse can speak a little bit more, just to the greater piece of it. I have, I work with, I collaborate with the Chief of Police and with the Fire Department of Madbury as well. Last year, we did have tours with state police and with neighboring town fire departments to come with us to go through the building, because, like you say, because it's not a full-time force, it is possible that the people who respond to the needs of our school might be state police, or it might be UNH Durham Fire Department, or Lee Fire Department as well. So, we wanted to make sure that anybody who came into our building knew what our building looked like. And so, we have done some of that touring and that work last year over February break. And, you know, I absolutely support and would push for all of the towns to sit down together, and it's something that we talked about with the man from Homeland Security, we need common language. When people come to our building from the state, they expect to use certain phrases, and to, and those phrases are supposed to mean certain things. And, schools across the state use different language for those things, and we should all be speaking the exact same language, because as we've been trained through FEMA, when the police would come to the building, I would then take charge from them, I'm no longer in charge, and I then assume a role that they give me, and we all need to be speaking the same language. And so, we have a lot of training to do in that area, and I think getting us all together is exactly the right thing to do. They're all our students, that's what we keep preaching academically, from a mental health perspective and from a safety perspective, they're all our students, and we should all be working together.
So, you know, the interesting thing is, Dan, that, you know, this popped up in the security letter, and what you're talking about is an interoperability agreement between the police departments. And, you know, with this report, I think, you know, we would be on a solid footing as a school system to write a letter to all three chiefs, because it's...
as a school system to write a letter to all three chiefs, because it showed up, I believe, in Carrie's as well. And it's probably shown up in the Durham one that we're about to talk about sooner. So it might be an opportune time as a school system with the board's support to write a letter to the three towns and the three police chiefs saying, this is a common thread in all of the assessments. And we encourage the three towns to come together, plus UNH, to a common interoperability agreement because that is really what would benefit the school systems. It's really hard to be the superintendent and have three separate police departments, three separate jurisdictions, three separate chiefs with three separate philosophies. And, you know, we ran into the issue when we were doing the phone emergency app in Madbury that it didn't work. In fact, that company ultimately went belly up. Right now, the Lee Police Chief is very slowly piloting, you know, another app. And I had a chance to talk to him and say, please reach out to the other two chiefs because if this gets any traction, it would only benefit the school system if we were all using the same tool. Unfortunately, we're not. And so I would say that with these three reports, it would be an opportune time for us to reach out to the three towns and say, you know, this is something that we would strongly encourage, just outside our bollywood. But now that it's in our safety reports, I think we can address it directly.
And Dr. Morse, if I could just add to that, you know, we have only one school in Madbury and we have one school in Lee. And we use each other as reunification sites, as evacuation sites. And so there's a very real possibility that the Madbury School would come to Durham and need to interact with the responders in Durham. Or we would go to Lee and need to interact with those responders. And so it's just another example of how we really should all be speaking the same language and working from the same playbook and being collaborative. I came from a district that did that with six towns. And it was very complicated and incredibly successful. And I think it would be great.
So just to sort of summarize, I, you know, I appreciate a lot of the proactive steps you've already taken and I completely support what you've just described, Dr. Morse. So what do you need from, do you need anything from us to give you that direction?
Yeah, I think that I do. I mean, if I'm going to write a letter to the three towns speaking for the board, then I just need your authority to write the letter and I can bring it back to the next meeting before I send it out and give you guys a chance to, give Kenny a chance to pull out his red pen.
Me too.
And I'd be glad to do that. I think the time is ripe.
We can put that in the agenda for the next meeting. Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
So I'm here to discuss the executive summary also for the Homeland Security Report as well. I'm not going to repeat a lot of what David just said. We went through the exact same process that they went through in August. The build, the high school is a very large building and we have, on any given day, a little over a thousand people in the building. So traffic has been an area that we've looked at and continue to look at. So the report is broken into three sections. The surveillance, the access control, and the emergency alerting. The surveillance has to do, again, I think, just with the size of the building. We do have cameras inside and outside of the building. Their recommendation is to really look at angles of the cameras, where the cameras are placed, and look at the possibility of, consider the possibility of increasing those and working with the Durham Police Department around that. We have been engaging in some of those conversations already about angles and placement of some of the cameras in the building. And I've spoken with Officer Malaski about that also and with Jim Rizicky. Access control, same thing. We have some minor changes that we're already working on and then we have some major changes that they have asked us to consider. Some of the minor ones I'll point out that we've already started looking at is putting arrows above the locks on the inside of the classroom so that it designates when it's locked and when it's not locked. We don't have, the classrooms don't have necessarily a knob that you turn. They have, it's a key lock. So when the teachers come in and they unlock their door, they re-lock the door so that if they need to close it, it would automatically be locked. But we have teachers that are sharing classrooms. And so the teacher that's entering that classroom needs to be able to look at the lock and know if it's locked or not locked. And so that's one of the recommendations, one of the considerations that they asked us to look at and we've already started looking at that. Also hardware, where the hardware is placed and the doors, the exterior doors, similar to what David mentioned, we're already looking at that. Radios, having more radios available so that people that are leaving the building for an outside classroom experience, they can bring a radio with them. Our exercise physiology and wellness department already has radios, but we do have a lot of science classrooms and English classes also that take, that are outside. So we want to make sure. So those are just a few items. The larger areas around access control have to do with, as David said, the front entrance. We did make adjustments, last year I made adjustments to the front office and the way people come in. They still, they do have to get buzzed in twice in order to enter the building during the school hours. However, the first, when you get buzzed in through the first door, you're already in the school, but you're in the office area. So in order to enter the other parts of the school, you need to get buzzed in a second time. The recommendations or that they have for upgrading the main entrance, and I put an image there, which is very similar to what David was talking about, where they don't actually have access to the person, it's really a window. And you see this a lot. I was at Exeter High School recently and they did a renovation of their front entrance and it's very similar to this, the image that's down below. The other, other area that Jim Rizicky and I have been talking a lot about is barriers. So we need to have some barriers that prohibit vehicles from getting to exposed doors. So we have the NPR, we have the large glass doors there. So they've talked about putting some barriers there to limit access there and also the back of the school as well. And those are noted as well. And then the emergency alerting really has to do with how we're coordinating with emergency responders, how we're communicating with each other and really auditing these communication systems that we do have and making sure that we do that on a regular basis. But I would like to echo the conversation that you were just having in regards to working with other members of the community, with fire, with the police department, and even UNH, to get together and talk about if we did have an evacuation, you know, what would reunification look like? Where would we go? How would we work together as a community if we had some type of active threat and needed to evacuate? So I think that that was one of the conversations that we had also that I think would be very beneficial.
Questions?
I noticed on there, one of the recommendations, although it was a minor one, was for access to the schools, was to bring the PEP kids into the main entrance too. That's kind of, wouldn't that be a little intimidating to the kids, getting them through there with adults?
Yes, and that's, that's a conversation I'd have to have with Lori Grant and talk to her about, about, yes. It could be. Because the kids, the PEP kids are coming, there's two section, there's two sessions. So they're coming and going throughout the day, in the middle of the day.
But don't they have their own secure door in the back?
They do have their own secure in back and we, and there is a, there's a camera on that door, so they do, yes. Yeah.
Other questions?
I just, it's just frightening times that we think this way. And I just really want to point out that all these efforts into securing your building, but then we have basketball games here at night and anyone comes in. Or kids are playing sports on the field or kids are riding home in buses. And I think it's really important we follow these recommendations, but we do deceive ourselves that we're really protecting. And again, maybe it's like the mental health thing. It's, the school can do what it can do, but we have a society issue again, and it's very sad.
Questions?
Can I go back to the interoperability discussion for just a moment?
Sure.
So we're going to take that up next time. Are we taking that up with a draft communication for us to chew on or is this a discussion next time?
I think you're going to come with a letter.
Yeah, I'll come with a draft.
Great. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, coming to the discussion item, Orchard Drive. I think six of us were at the hearing or the meeting that occurred last Tuesday where there was, Dennis presented a possibility of opening up a link across the, link across the Oyster River so that the faculty neighborhood could be connected to the Floss Farm neighborhood. There's also interest, and I think, in maintaining a right of way on this property so that there could be access from the cul-de-sac to the network of hiking trails that are in, both on the UNH land, the McDonald land, there's a whole network there. We've been talking about possibly going forward with a survey to create housing lots. I think there is some sentiment, you know, whether we want to consider just putting the entire property into conservation, that might be something we want to think about and whether there might be some organizations that could purchase that from us as conservation. So I think we have, kind of have to think about how we're going to go forward with this, with this property. And so I don't know if people have thoughts about that. I guess I had questions, like if we do create lots, are we going to sell each lot individually? I mean, are we going to get into the real estate business to sell these lots? I mean, are there costs involved with selling each of the lots, you know, legal, you know? So I guess I would like to consider at least pause the possibility that we think about, at least exploring the possibility of putting the entire property into conservation, which would enable that link to be made. And whether there are organizations that would purchase, could give us the, could purchase that land from us and do that. And whether that might be a step that we want to take before we go down the route of building, of creating housing lots. So I just want to throw that out there as a possibility because I know, and this is a change of mind on my part, because I was, I was thinking about, you know, housing lots was going to be the natural use for it. I also think that although we think we'd be welcoming, you know, people to move into the community in terms of pure economics, if you create residences that are going to draw in students to the school, you're creating an occurring, you know, recurring cost to all the community because that's a, whether from a pure financial, this decision, that's a really wise thing, you know, whether you, we benefit from that financially. So I just throw that out. Dan?
Just because it's the period of time over which we've discussed the property, it's fairly prolonged at this point. Dr. Morse, would you mind reiterating the results of your research into the origins of the property? And I'm asking this because we've heard anecdotally about some of the desires of the person who donated to the district, which I certainly respect. But if I recall correctly, there wasn't, the results of your investigation did not yield a lot of documentation in terms of what the understanding was that the district would do with the property, that sort of thing.
So I think that originally the property was donated with the idea that an elementary school might exist there and take advantage of the trails and the naturalness of the site. But there's no real solid written record of intent. So, you know, Mike, his grandson, would have just as strong a view of what, what the original intent was. I think there was no question the original intent was to take advantage of all of the natural landscape and trails down there and have the school system be able to enjoy that. But as we know, when we did the analysis of the land, it is largely wetlands with some isolated pockets where housing could go up. The most that you could possibly get in terms of the number of houses is four, but there aren't four lots. You know, the debate is whether there's two lots, maybe, and that's a big maybe, three. And, you know, the idea originally that the board floated was to try to sell the lots, wasn't to divide those lots into huge tracts of land, but just to take advantage of the house lots. And then the rest of the property would be put in conservation because there's, at that point, there's no value to the school system. So when we saw how much wetland was down there, it really defeated any idea of putting a school on that property. I mean, size-wise, it was wonderful, but when you did the analysis and you have the wetland map, you can see it's largely wetland. And so the surveyor that was part of the meeting that Tom alluded to, you know, he would be the person that would go forward if that's what the board wanted. And based on your last vote, you know, I secured his services, but then having had that public meeting, I basically just told him to cool his jets for a little bit until we had a conversation here as to what the board would want to do next. I would share with you that if you decide to go down the surveying path, there's not a whole lot of time left to do it and before, you know, it's going to be inaccessible. So, you know, when the, there was probably 40 people here last week, really engaged people who were passionate about the property and its value to the greater community in terms of conservation. Really, it's the first time in three years of talking about this property that we had that kind of turnout about it. Because when we took a vote to sell it, nobody was here to say, don't sell it. But I think that Dennis's idea of a bridge across the Oyster, a walking bridge across the Oyster River, and then UNH's original proposal about having access to their back property through it was reiterated by others in the meeting last week. So there's really a passion, I would say, and that would be the right word, for us to consider going towards conserving the property as opposed to selling the property. That's really what I took out of that meeting that night.
Denise?
I think my one concern with that, and I certainly heard, and it, and, you know, certainly makes a lot of sense, but everyone there, to my knowledge, I think was a Durham resident. And the reality is, is that, you know, we are Durham, Lee, and Madbury. And so I'm, I'm really uncomfortable with just, you know, making a donation to the town of Durham for this property that would, and not to say that Madbury and Lee residents wouldn't be able to take advantage of the trails and so on and so forth, but largely Durham. And I just feel like somehow we need to, I think, be mindful that we need to somehow see that it's equitable, I think, for Lee and Madbury residents as well. So I'm not quite sure how we can do that, but that is a concern of mine.
Mr. Patty, I think.
Hear your concern. I had a different point, just want to just push it in there before we continue to talk about yours. It seems to me that with all the wetlands, if we parceled it up into different places that could possibly be developed, the property wouldn't end up being very valuable to build houses on. And going on off of Tom's point with the economics of it, it seems to me that if each house, sorry, I'm not being very eloquent with this. So we sell the land for people to build houses on, families move in, we spend, off of just the Barrington, like tuition, we spend somewhere around $16,000 on each student every year. It seems like it really would be detrimental to this, to the school district to sell this land for development.
So what we put out to bid, what exactly were the bids that we got back for the property?
Well, Dennis offered $100,000. If, what?
I offered $150,000.
And a developer offered 150,000. And at that point, we weren't in a position to say yes.
So again, when, to Denise's point, I mean, we haven't done a survey of it, but I'm looking at particularly the top part, we want to have easement and it's pretty thin to try to build anything there. But the property itself, again, what we've heard is, has a value of $150,000. And so, again, it's only Durham, it's only, I mean, it's Durham, Lee, and Madbury that make up the cooperative, so it has to, we have like a fiduciary responsibility to all of. three communities. My thought really is, I, I do think this should go into conservation, and Kenny and I are familiar with this, it's like there is no free lunch in terms of conservation. Once you accept a piece of land, you accept the responsibility of caring for the land, which is what has been a big issue. But I've also spent almost three years now in Durham's Economic Development Committee. And what the real focus of our economic development has been is what are the best-used areas to develop, to generate the revenue, to meet our town goals. And, and our town goals actually kind of overlap with, with the school goal in terms of sustainability and maintaining property. So I think, you know, right now, that we've had this out for several years, my thought kind of laps over with Tom is, is there a possibility that we can cobble together groups that will be able to come up with what we think is the market value of the, of the property, which would then meet our fiduciary responsibility to Lee and Madbury? I think it's, I think it's worth a try to give them some time to see if they can do this, and come back and see what, what would happen. So I, I think that would allow us then, the property would go into conservation, it's, links up perfectly with UNH, and there's a longer vision of how these trails go together. In fact, it's what Durham has been trying to do with many of its properties. So I, I think, again, I think it's worth the time to investigate that rather than spend $20,000 right now to, to survey it when, you know, maybe that's not the best use for the property, putting houses on it.
I would agree with that.
I, I totally agree with that as well. I, and I share your concern, it was one of the things that I had talked with people before that meeting, is that the land is owned by the school district, and the school district comprises three towns. But I think to look and to see whether any of the conservancy organizations, Nature Conservancy, SALT, any of those have interest in trying to package that together. You know, I think one of the things too that really impressed me from the meeting is looking at vision, and what, and, and the equity argument is very valid, but what the school district is going to realize is really a drop in the bucket in one year's budget, let alone multi-year and best use of land. And, you know, and I, I think we need to be stewards as well of our communities and solve that equity issue. And I think that's the approach of not just saying, you know, "Hear UNH, take the land," or "Hear Durham, just take the land," but to explore the opportunities with organizations that might be able to put up some money and kind of make it a wash in a way. So that's what I would lean to.
Yeah.
Denise?
Yeah, because the other issue is, and I like that idea better, because if we, for example, just gave the land to UNH, there's no guarantee, I mean, then they could do whatever they wanted with it, you know what I'm saying? So I, I do, I do like the idea of seeing if there are organizations that would perhaps, you know, want to invest to be able to put this into conservancy, because I'm not opposed to that, I just feel like, you know, I, I just to say, "Okay, Durham, this is great for you," but, you know, so.
Right. So how, so I'm trying to figure out how we proceed if we, you know, if there's a feeling on the board that we should at least find out if this is a possibility, you know, something like setting up a, a working committee to explore possibilities for, for, for a purchase, say by, by Nature Conservancy, Southeast Land Trust, I'm not sure how that works, but some, some organization that would put it into conservation and, and maintain it, right?
And, and to your point too, Denise, when you do a transaction such, you are able to write terms into the transaction that define what can or can't be done as well. So, and that will be very important for us to do, because we certainly don't want to go through this whole process and then have it go awry, we have a goal.
Right.
I'm reminded of the, the oil or production that was, that wanted to, that the people wanted to put in the bay. So we, I, I agree with Kenny, I think we need to set out those terms before it gets purchased.
So just in terms strategically, how should, you know, if we, how should we go forward? Should we, should we create a committee to, that maybe, I was thinking of somebody that, some of the people who have expressed an interest in that property, maybe somebody from the town, you know, I'm thinking, maybe you, Kenny, because you run the.
I'm on the land stewardship committee, which we network.
Maybe somebody from the, you know, whether, whether Dr. Morse, maybe the next meeting, Dr. Morse would come to us with, with a proposal for a group that would, and then we could create a charge for that group to come back to us with a, to see if that's feasible. I mean, down the road, we could still, and the land's still going to be there, I mean, the option for creating lots is, won't be.
It's not going to go away.
But if, I think this, I mean, I felt at the meeting, there was this opportunity to do something really, really great. And I was just walking that land with my dog the other day, just because I haven't walked it, and it's just, it's just magnificent. And then down to the river, I just think that it's, and then it, what it does is it consolidates that whole property, you know? It's just, you know, it, there's waterfront there, you know, riverfront, it's, it's a great piece of land, and it consolidates that whole, the McDonald land, the UNH land, am I correct in that?
I mean, it's funny, I wrote a, and I hate to advertise, but I, I wrote a blog post at the beginning of the school year, which is called "Back to Reality." And, and in it, I was putting, one of the amazing things about Durham is that within a short walk of most big neighborhoods, there's trails, and it's, it's a treasure of our community. And the, the thing is, is when you develop it before you take the opportunity to save it, there's no going back. And so when you have an opportunity to look through it, I think it's worth taking your time to really examine what you can do with it. And I think this is what, that this opportunity is right now.
Okay. So would that be a plan, Michael?
Well, in the interest of simplicity, is it worth going back to the folks that have submitted offers in the past to see if those offers are still?
Well, one of them would be a developer, he'd put houses there, and one of them was, was somebody who would want to conserve the property.
I understand that, but if we think that that value is equivalent to whatever else we would get by doing a lot of other work, and taking a lot of other time from both ourselves and the rest of the community, sometimes the simplest solution is the best.
You suggesting to reach, reach out to both parties? Or just the one that would put it in conservator?
Well, the, the sentiment of the board seems to be that the, the conservation option is preferred.
Yep, I can do that, for sure.
Just one last thing too, that we didn't mention that came out at the meeting, was the connectivity, that it connected two separate neighborhoods that are full with kids that go to our schools, and they're separated and they can't get to each other. And this, not only could more kids walk to school, bike to school, but it brings those two neighborhoods together, which is a great concept.
It'd be fabulous.
But what is the status of the Thompson Lane right-of-way on the other side of the river?
It's just a road, so.
There is a road there, and it's paved?
Yeah, so you just, yeah, so you just fit right in there.
So just to be clear on the direction that you're giving me, one is to reach out to one of the parties who was suggesting they wanted to put it in conservatorship, and then the other one was to come back with a plan in terms of a, a committee that would work on finding out whether organizations would be willing to pay for the property so it could be put in conservatorship.
I think, I think Michael's solution, at least was the first, the first step would be, before he created a committee, see if we have this offer, see if it's still in existence. And my sense is that it's been on the market for how long, three years, two years? And, you know, we haven't got, you know, it reminds me, like, one time I was trying to sell my house in Forsyth, and I was convinced that it was worth $150,000, and somebody made an offer for $110,000, and I was really angry, you know, because it was worth $150, I was sure of it. And then I got no bigger offers, I put it on the market the next year, got an offer for $110,000 and took it, and I think its value was, you know, I had an inflated sense of value, and we've had offers of.
You just had a premature sense of its worth, because you had it.
I thought, wait, wait, I'd be so much better off, you know? It's, maybe it's a bad analogy, I'll take it all back, you know?
So just going back for clarity again, so soon I reach out, the person's not interested, then I'll, I'll come back with a plan in that same meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Sounds like a good idea.
Okay. Okay, so, I'm sorry, I lost my agenda. So is that, you have a sense of, I appreciate your suggestion, Michael, because I think that's, that is the, the first step would be not to make a committee. Okay, so we have some actions we could maybe do fairly quickly, rather than take a break now. So we need a motion to approve the Massway Activity stipend. Denise?
Our motion to approve the Massway Activity stipend.
Moved by Denise, second by Al. Discussion on that? Al in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in a favor. And then we have three po, let's see, one, two, three policies, which are pretty much explained in the background to the, to the, the policy, the description of the policies. I don't, Denise, do you want to say anything about these, or they're all for first, are these all for first?
Right, they're all for, they're all for first read. I'd like to just make a motion to approve them for, for, you know, for first read as a block. Policy JICFA, student hazing, EHAA, computer security, email, internet communications, and IHBG home education.
Okay, moved by Denise, as a, as a block for first read, is her second? Second by Brian.
Any discussion, questions about these?
I just want to point out that sometimes when, in fact, I would say most of the time, when we're presented with marked-up documents, the assumption is that the markup indicates the difference between the current document and the proposed document. In two of these cases, that's not the case. One of them, I think EHAA is a completely new policy, and the other one, IHBG is a, basically a complete rewrite of, of the, of the home education policy. I don't have any problem with the content, but you can't just look at the red lines.
Okay. Gotcha.
Ready to vote, Denise? All, all those approving these as a block for first read, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Okay, school board committee updates, somebody will say something, the manifesto committee?
Yeah, so, you know, not doing manifestor probably over a year, I had forgotten what a difficult task it is, and tonight we were presented with the World Series being in process, and, but we, there was no talk of baseball whatsoever, we processed documents, and they were perfectly in order. We, we found them very acceptable.
Well, that's good to hear.
I have a quick one.
Go ahead.
I don't know if like Todd brought it up with like the Wellness Committee, I missed a meeting, but we, the Wellness Committee actually, we kind of fragmented into smaller subgroups. There was the mental health that was there, the committee that I'm on, really what we're doing is looking, and it's a question that's been before us a long time, which is trying to stabilize our health insurance rates, or how we most efficiently can use our health insurance, and I can't remember what our fancy name. Cost containment. So we're toiling away on that, of best ways to do that. And there was another group that's looking at reviewing the wellness policy, which hadn't been looked at for quite some time. And then there was another group, actually Kenny kind of brought it up with data, looking at that data, and exactly what trends are we seeing from that data, and how can we effectively use it. So we're working in smaller subgroups, and then we'll meet in a larger group to pool our ideas. So I think it's a more efficient way to do work.
So I just add to that now. So we, the idea on the cost containment and related to health insurance is actually one that our HR person, Teresa Pryor, brought to the table, to Todd and I, the school district, we're going to visit the school district, can you remember what, Mary Mac? And they've been having a cost containment component to their Wellness Committee now for a number of years, and have used that to teach staff how to use the health insurance when they need it, but also to use it competitively. And the insurance company in the district and, and the employee are all working collaboratively to try to contain health costs, but at the same time, use their health benefits in an efficient way. So it's really a terrific idea, and it really goes to Teresa for bringing it to the table, because she went to an HR meeting and talked to the Mary Mac folks, so I'm pretty excited by that.
Long Range Planning Committee met on the 17th, and much of the discussion was around sort of the missing kindergarten children, because whereas we were really very close as far as first grade, we were originally, I think, right on, and then with the October 1st, we were off by maybe two or three. But we had predict, we had predicted 90, 110 versus the 92 that actually showed up, and we, we threw out a lot of possibilities. It definitely did not appear to have anything to do with real estate sales. We had Allison, say her name, Muller?
Mueller.
Mueller, I always say it wrong, sorry, who talked about sales last year versus this year, and certainly sales continue to be robust. There's 196 so far this year, or, excuse me, 185 so far this year compared to 196 total last year. So that doesn't seem to explain why, what the decrease is. One interesting idea that somebody mentioned was wondering whether families might be deliberately, like, not so much homeschooling, but waiting that extra year before enrolling their children in kindergarten. So we kind of threw out a lot of different theories, didn't really get to anything definitive, but it was decided that because we really don't have a reason to say, "Well, this, this particular formula doesn't work," basically we're going to use the same strategy to predict next year and see. By then, we'll have three years' worth of full-day kindergarten, so that might also help in terms of Long Range Planning Committee with future numbers.
Denise, did the committee look at the live births five years ago versus the enrollment?
Yes, and that doesn't, that doesn't explain it either.
Doesn't either.
Because, yeah, in fact, I think, and I don't have it right in front of me, but I think even the births were up a little bit, but our numbers were down compared to, in '17, it was the opposite. We had way more students show up than we expected.
Right.
We kind of attributed that to having full day. So this year, just having those children not, it just, we're not really sure. And it'll be interesting to see if they show up in first grade, that's what we're waiting to see.
We can ask them what they're saying.
They are, it's like, where are these kids? But we'll see what happens.
I know where one of them is. I have an out-of-district kindergartner.
So that might be, so.
One down, 19 to go.
The arrest, the negotiating team met with the RSP last Tuesday, right?
Yeah. Wonder Tuesday, Monday, last Monday, and I think we're moving forward. Looks like there's progress on the, the, just wording issues, the work, kind of work issues, and on the, on the financial issues.
Their initial fire, financial proposal and ours were very close. So, you know, I don't foresee any obstacles for us coming to a timely conclusion. We still have a lot of work to do, but the conversation is still positive, and we seem to be closing gaps relatively easily.
And Brian, myself, I think Jim, and I don't know, maybe, I don't know who else is going to take a road trip to Keene and to Bedford to look at the middle, do middle schools, the new middle school in Keene, and the, which has an auditorium, so I'm really curious to see how they, how they did that and how that works, and to, to look at the middle school part of the, the Bedford School, which is also new, kind of state-of-the-art, to see some, see what some of these do. So that's.
So I was going to try to bow out, because, you know, Al has got this one ticket for me to the World Series, but he managed to give it to me on game seven. So he said, "Don't hold your breath," because he's looking for a route for these next games. So I said.
But if it's a game seven, you're out, right?
So I said to Brian, "I don't think I can come, because I've got tickets to the World Series." He said, "You can come, you're not going anywhere."
We will, we will see, we will see. Well, so if we have a public comment, did we say something?
So my name is Dennis Meadows, I live in Durham, and as you know, I have interest in this school property, which was actually donated by two people. Stevens gave half of it, and Ray McDonald gave half of it, together hoping a school would eventually go there. I want to thank the board profoundly for giving some attention to the conservation aspects of the land. Some time ago, I looked at a map of Durham, and two places stood out as being incredibly important. important for the future of the town in terms of education, recreation, and sort of aesthetics. One of them is the north half of that pasture around the Mill Pond, the one you see when you come into Durham on 108. I recently bought that and gave it to the town. And the other one is that combined plot that you currently own over next to the McDonald Lot. So the profit that you can get by dividing that up, as Kenny said, is miniscule compared with its value to the town. By the time you sell off two or three lots and subtract surveying and test pits and administrative and legal fees and so forth, there's really not going to be much left to show for it. And yet, we saw at the public meeting, which you organized last week, 40 people came up and eloquently talked about how incredibly important that land has been to them, and what an enormous difference it would make to the town if it could be used in a way that would extend connections between two different important parts of the town, and suddenly open up a huge, beautiful, natural area to the people who live in faculty division. And it wouldn't only be for Durham. I am extensively involved out at Wagon Hill, which of course is owned by Durham, but I can tell you that that property is used by people from all over the seacoast, not only by Durham. And I am sure that it would be possible to create opportunities in this area which would attract people from many, many different places. You talk about conservation, it's a complex issue. I have a lot of experience and a lot of personal contacts in that field, and I would be delighted to work with people that you put together to provide information, to try and understand, you know, how to make it happen in a way that is, you know, respects the future and also honors the obligations that you have on the board.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Okay, we have the future meetings coming up, I'll go over those. We have no non-public or non-meeting, so I think we're ready to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Al, seconded by.
Second.
Nickel, Al's in favor. We're adjourned. Al.